We have further participation that is done at this time. We move down to staff reports. Dr. Porter.
Thank you, President Barty and board members. It's been a busy three weeks. As you know, we've gone through our STAR assessments. We're into that STAR EEOC now, getting ready for the end of the school year. And our students and staff have worked extremely hard at getting to this point. We are proud of them for what they do at the end of the year. It's just, it's unfortunate that we have to put so much emphasis on the STAR tests, state assessments, for our students to be able to move forward. But the good thing about that, the wonderful thing about that is that that's not all we do. And our students are very well-rounded. And this week, last week, they've done so much. That's why it's so important that we bring them to you so you can see what wonderful, smart, intelligent, creative students that we have in the Port Arthur Independent School District. And it's not just based on the STAR tests. Our students do so much, so, so much. They're wonderful, wonderful kids. They really are. And at this time, I'm going to ask representatives from Lincoln. They went out, they had, there were two teams. Come on, come on. And when I tell you, when, it's on, it's on, I never turn it off. When I tell you they went out and they brought back, I mean, all I can say is we're so proud of you. So tell us exactly what happened. Hold up one second, it's not on. That's, okay.
Good evening, everyone. Mrs. Gahad, I'm one of the coaches of A.I.L. Lincoln Robotics Academy Robotics Team. I have with me Ms. Pat Baggan as one of the coaches as well. I'm just, we are just extremely proud of the achievements of our robotics team. We have traveled last week, we have been traveling for three weeks actually to compete at Lubbock, Texas. It's a 10-hour drive. So last week, April 20th, we have competed against the top of the five leagues for the robotics competition. And one of our teams won fifth place and other special awards such as judges award. And one of our teams also have gathered other awards, but they are the champions for that robotics competition. So this only showcase that we have excellent students here at Port Arthur, at Lincoln specifically. So I want, I just want to give recognition to these students and to our supportive parents.
Yes, please, the parents, please stand up that are representing our students.
So we have, for Team One, we have Isabella Rowe, please stand up. Lucia Acosta, Freddie Martinez. And for our second team, we have Jaden Harrison, Felix Nurem, and Hernan Lareira.
Very great. If you don't mind, what, if, I'm just, this is just off the cuff. If you don't mind, we definitely would like to bring the students up so we can see them.
Yes, sir.
And then if you have one that is not bashful, that will talk at the drop of a dime, if you would let them just say a couple of words of the, of what it meant to them to travel to Lubbock, to win the competition and be number one, get fifth place, do number one in Lubbock, Texas, 10 hours away from here, competing. So please, if you have someone that, that loves to talk, we'd love to hear.
Jaden, come on. He's actually the team leader of the team that won.
Okay, great, great. Now, all of you, come forward, yes. We want to see your faces. Come forward. Jaden, they already said you have the one that can vocalize. You're the one that can vocalize and express. So we want to hear you express your excitement. Now, you're act bashful. You're bringing home the, the number one trophy, the number one award, and you're going to be bashful?
No. I'm proud of my team and how we done. I'm proud of them too. We did good, we went there, we won, we did what we were supposed to.
We did what we're supposed to. Perfect. We did what we're supposed to.
A couple of words. Hello to all the board members. As you see, this is our championship team also. Our other team that they work hard and they got fifth place with all their might. So I want to give some extra details. So at first, when we were at the competition, we, we were confident. We were confident in our robot that helps us, that helps us succeed in every competition that we've gone to. And usually, once we did all the rounds, we scored really high numbers of points, which boosted our confidence more, knowing that we would win. At the end, although we won, still, we were really nervous because we won by 10 points. And even though, even though we still won, we still kind of disappointed because we knew, we knew we were very sure that we could have gotten more points and won by a lot.
Wow. You know what? Tell me, ladies and gentlemen, this is a young man that said, yes, we won. Yes, we won, but that's not enough. We won by 10 points, but that's not enough. We could have did better. We wanted to do better than that. It's not like we won. Some people would say by one point, okay, we won. But they said, just 10 points? No, we need to win better. You know what? Wonderful, wonderful to hear. I'm excited about that. Don't settle, don't settle for anything. Keep going, keep moving. Yes, yes. Anything else you want to tell us? And parents, parents, stand up again. Stand up one more time. Let, let me tell you how proud we are of you. Because we know for your students to have done this, it took your time as well. You had to take the time and bring them to practice and listen to them talk about it and encourage them. So parents, hey, round of applause for each of you.
At this time, trustees, we have anything? And Ms. Johnson asked something before. Ms. Johnson said, say, what she had to say. I would say congratulations. I like that. Mrs. Lot, I want you to make a quote saying, winning is not enough.
Winning is not enough.
Winning is not enough. And after Ms. Johnson say, she had to say, and the trustees had to say, to say, can we have a privilege of taking a picture with the champions?
Yes, all of you, yes.
Okay, I just want to also maybe what President Barty said. Congratulations to you guys. I'm really excited about the robotics. First being because when I was a graduate of our first memorial class in 2003, I don't recall us having a robotics team or anything of that such. And it's just really exciting to know that that's something that we have started offering. Kudos to the instructors, the coaches, because you guys have to have a lot of knowledge about that in order to be able to share with them. And I know absolutely nothing about it. I'm excited to come, maybe see when I have a practice or anything like that so I can see how it works because it's really interesting to me. And it does take a lot of thought, a lot of time and knowledge. And I give all kudos to you for, you gentlemen and you ladies for mastering that, not only doing it because you like it, but doing it to win and having that attitude. So it's really exciting to me. It really shows the different dynamic of programs that we offer for Port Arthur ISD and that people can get involved in. I'd like to see us reach out to more people and try to get them involved in it. You know, they may not know anything about it to help you guys become even better winners than you already are. So I'm just excited about that and really happy for you guys and really proud of you all and very thankful for to your instructors for getting you to this point. So keep up the good work.
Yes, yes. Ms. Ambrose?
Yes, I'd just like to again echo the sentiments of my other board members. Congratulations to you. Congratulations to the parents. You do, Port Arthur proud. You also just put Southeast Texas on the map. So very proud of you. Keep up the good work.
So at this time, trustees can join me and take a picture.
Thank you again. Mrs. Lot, are you ready?
Since we last met, we have had 12 observances throughout the end of March and throughout the month of April. As you see, April is World Autism Month. And we have celebrated our paraprofessionals, our librarians, our assistant principals, our volunteers. This week is Earth Week. On Saturday, we had groups of students who participated in the citywide cleanup for Earth Day. We celebrated Happy World Book Day this week also. In the top left corner, we have a Memorial High School senior. We talked about this in the fall where there was a contest. And the winner of the contest, their crest that they designed would be on the uniforms of our police officers. So here you actually see the young lady who created the design. And it is actually on the uniforms of our officers. In the middle, we had the annual Blue Bonnet Brunch for our gifted and talented students. And this is Port Agus Elementary Campus. There were several students in the program who were awarded certificates and medals for reading the, at least five of the books that were nominated for a Blue Bonnet Book of the Year. They found out which book won that prestigious award. They even did dinner theater with, it was like, reading the books. It was like a theatrical performance for some of the campuses read some of the stories. The top right corner, we have one of our sophomores from the high school, Josiah Carter, placed fourth in his first U.I.L. event. The bottom vector donated virtual reality equipment to our CTE welding program. And we had some solo and ensemble competition results from our Alpha Campus, six superior ratings and eight excellent ratings from the band. Our Motiva Aspire Mentorship Program concluded. So all of the seniors who have participated in that program for the past couple of years were gifted by their mentors in the ceremony. The bottom left, we have had students, female students who have attended Women in Industry luncheons, not just in Beaumont and Port Arthur, but also in Galveston. In the middle, we have a U.I.L. Literary Criticism Team that came in first place and is now headed to regionals. On the right, we have our Port Arthur Chapter of Top Teens of America. They went to an area conference in Houston and the group placed second overall for Outstanding Top Teen Program of Work. And we have Ms. Top Teen and Mr. Top Teen, who are students at Wilson Early College, Paige Davis and Kalen Gardner, Jr. At the top left, Wilson Early College had a organization that did community service at a nursing home. And they were gifted gift cards by the family of one of the residents who observed them during the community service and wanted to reward them. We've been celebrating Earth Day with different campuses, doing things at the campus gardens and also with butterfly habitats at the campuses. We have several pictures from students engaging in activities to prepare them for STAR testing. All of our campuses were actively engaged. We have been producing videos with our principals explaining to the public how we have been standing on growth. And they've been showing how they have been preparing the students for STAR. A lot of our campuses in the classes on those campuses went out to watch the solar eclipse. So those students in the middle of the collage are looking at the eclipse. These are our Alpha Robotics Winners in the bottom left. And the bottom right, a lot of campuses had dress up. We had a group of students who were awarded scholarships from the 100 Black Men of Beaumont. We have some students who were awarded honors from the Martin Luther King Support Group of Southeast Texas. The two young ladies at the bottom center and left entered their artwork in a competition in Beaumont at the federal courthouse. These are, this $750 cash prize went to the first place winner. So we have that first place winner, and that's a lot of money. And then the Honorable Mention received a $50 gift card. And their artwork is going to be on display in the courthouse for a year until next year's competition. We celebrated our retirees and service award honorees for the year. So these are the pictures of most of our retirees and a few of our service award honorees. And that bottom right corner is another classroom celebrating Earth Day. In our Titan Elite Athletics, we are in tennis season. Today, our tennis team traveled to Barbers Hill for a district tennis tournament. And one of our Lincoln alumni from the Class of 2001, her name is Marwana Bush. She and her husband own a toasted yolk restaurant there. They provided lunch for our Titan tennis team today. So we want to thank them for that and we recognize them on social media. We have, we're concluding our softball and baseball seasons. Our football team has started spring training. And we have some Titan track and field stars, I call them, who are headed to state. We have six students who have qualified in the four-by-100 and four-by-200 relays. And their names are listed there. The state track meet is scheduled for May 30th and 4th at, I think it's University of Texas Field. This week, our elementary basketball league has been having their championship tournaments. They were Tuesday, Wednesday, and tonight. That's probably where trustee Lofton is, because he's one of the coaches heavily involved in that. This picture in the top center, that is senior night for our Lady Titan softball team. We are going to have a soccer tournament for middle school boys at our Memorial Stadium this Saturday from 8:30 to 4:00. Admission is $5. And once you have the wristband, you can come and go as you please throughout the day. And they will also have food trucks and concessions available. On May 9th, our Clash of the Titans, we will have Lincoln versus TJ for girls soccer and boys soccer. Both games are on the same day. And we want to know who's going to take home the trophy for the Clash of the Titans. These are some of the events that we have been promoting throughout the community. We have been encouraging citizens of Port Arthur to vote in the school board election. Early voting started this week and Election Day is on May 4th. So we want to continue to encourage the public to go out and vote. We were heavily advertising or announcing the STAR testing dates. Every week, we will send out all calls, emails, text messages, and Facebook postings about which STAR tests were that particular week so parents would know and students will be prepared. We have been promoting Kelly Services to help them recruit substitutes throughout the district, not just substitute teachers, but substitute paraprofessionals, substitute custodians, substitute cafeteria workers and such. Today, I spoke to the Breeze Radio Station. And this may become something that we do once a month as another outlet to inform the community of what's going on in Port Arthur ISD. We have been heavily, heavily, heavily promoting online registration for our students for next year. And we have been explaining to parents that it is crucial to register your students for next year so that you will not delay their first day of school. Students need to register every year in the spring for the following school year in the fall. If they are not registered when school starts in the fall, the first day, first two days, first three days, that child may be in a library or in a gymnasium or some type of holding area until they are registered because they cannot be placed in a class and given a schedule without being registered. And they cannot have bus transportation if they are not registered. So we have been actively trying to get parents to register kids. Right now, we do not have everybody registered. And we need to have every, all 8,000-plus students registered for next year. We announced our prom date of May 4th, our graduation May 24th. But we also announced on May 10th, we will have students from Wilson Early College earning their associate degree. We will also have students from the CTE campus earning their certification in either automotive technology, welding, or computer drafting. Those graduations are at the same time. So it's our Wilson kids and our CTE campus kids. And these are some more of our promoting what's going on in the community. We have some students who won scholarships from the Southeast Texas Women in Industry. The high school has already started hosting senior informational parent meetings for the junior class this year who will be graduating next year. They have a meeting next Tuesday, April 30th, for those parents. We have produced videos of our principals talking about the things that, that their campuses have done to prepare students for STAR. So it's a rock and review series. And we have published two of the videos and the third one should be published within the next few days. We also had some of our community supporters to submit videos encouraging the students to do well on the STAR test. So that was something that we hope the kids were encouraged by. And then this is our media summary for the month with 28 newspaper articles, three television news stories, the crisis communication all calls. That includes the weather updates and the registration reminders and the STAR reminders. We have one of our Memorial High School graduates that we are proud of, who interned in the Technology Department for a couple of summers while he was in college, Justin Bruceard. He graduated from Southern University. He was a member of the marching heat band and now he is employed by the PA ISD Technology Department. So we literally grew our own. And then we are remembering two of our former educators who passed away, retired Sam Houston educator Sandra McDaniel, and our former school board trustee Willie Mae Elmore, who also taught at the CTE campus throughout her career. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Lot. And lastly, we have a group of brightest and finest from the choir and band. They're proposing to go and compete. And we do know that every time they compete, they come back first place. That's, it's, you know, it's getting, we don't expect anything less from them. So I'm going to ask Mr. Frazier, if you want to come introduce, or whoever you have in line, to come and tell us what they want, how they want to do it, and where they're going.
Good evening. I'm Alice Frazier. I have the pleasure of being a director of bands at Memorial High School. I also have our two assistant directors, Mr. Manuel Diaz and Mr. Cameron Davis. And we have a few of our students who are qualified to go to the state level of competition on May the 26th through the 28th in Austin, Texas. We're really, really proud of these students. This is an annual thing. I think a lot of time people hear about state for a track and field and sports and they understand the magnitude of that, what that, this is what this is for us. These students have qualified to compete with some of the best musicians in the state of Texas. And we're especially proud this year because a lot of people don't know this. Every summer, the student leaders come in in June and they set goals for the band. When Mr. Johnson was still the director, we figured out, hey, this will be a lot easier if this is student-led and they're plotting, of course, of what they would like to do. And they set a goal that they wanted to have the most ever qualifiers for state. And we're proud to say that they've done that. So we have four here tonight. We have 30 in all. Very proud of these students. They went in January to Lumberton at the regional qualifier. We had 60 students participate. Of those 60, 40 received superior medals. And of that, 40, 37 qualified for the state level. So we're extremely proud of them. And I'm going to let them introduce themselves.
Good evening, y'all. I'm Navia Sauter. I play piccolo and flute and I'm in the 10th grade.
Good morning, I mean, good evening. My name is Andy Nguyen. I'm percussionist and I'm also a senior. For the past two years, I have managed to make it to the state competition. And being in solo state, in solo and ensemble state competition has been a very wonderful experience for me. Traveling to Austin, looking at the landmarks, eating out, and getting to spend time with your band directors and your peers is very, it's very humbling. And it's very, it makes me very happy to say that I am very happy to be part of this organization as well as to make it in the band. Being competing is very nerve-wracking, you could say, because you're going against people that are either under you, above you, or basically the same level as you. However, you get a lot from it. For example, you get feedback from the judges and it really helps you a lot. And with me, I use that feedback not just for myself, but I also use it for my section. And every time I go back from state, I always give them the best advice I can. But this year, I managed to make it to state again. And I would, it's my last year going to state. So I would like to make this the most memorable state competition. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Regina Gonzalez. I'm the piccolo and flute section leader.
Good evening. My name is Jaylen Scott. I'm currently a freshman and I play flute and piccolo.
Good evening. My name is Mona Myers. I'm a sophomore and I play percussion.
Okay, good evening again. So y'all heard from someone who has made state before, but I've never made state. And this year, I've made it. And it came with a lot of hard work and dedication. Because when I first entered high school, I wasn't that musically talented. But the environment and the atmosphere that the band provides, it, you have nowhere else to go butt up. You, you can't do nothing but to see. They push you until you can't be pushed no more. And I feel like this band is an awesome opportunity and it opens many doors and it just betters you as a person. And you get to know many people, you get to meet different people here and there. You get opportunities, you get to travel places you've never been before. And it's just a blessing to have made it this far. And I would have never thought I made it this far.
I left out one more thing to say. So there's a thing that we have a saying in our band. It's, if it was easy, everyone would do it. It's not easy being in the band and it's not easy to make it to state competition. However, we have managed to put in the hard work that we have to make it this far. And even though I'm a senior, I'm very proud of my underclassmen because they're just, what, sophomores and, what, freshmen too?
Yeah.
And being a senior, it's really built on the foundation because this has been a really great family to be in. And I'm, I'm sad to say that I will miss this band when I leave. But I'm very happy to be a part of this organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
So I think that's all we have for our students. I want to say that I think everyone at Suffolk End is the first time this year. And you can see some of their medals. I think the white ones are from middle school. So this is something that they work towards. They work towards this with our band directors. They start in middle school with Mr. Jackson and Mr. Bruceard, going to middle school U.I.L. And once they get to high school, some of our really student talents, really, really talented students like Jalen here, they may make it the first time. But we have other students, they may spend all four years trying to make it to this level. So we're super proud of them and the work that they've put in. This is different from the marching band competitions or even concert band competitions because they can't rely on us as directors for instruction. They have to go by themselves in front of a judge and they have to play and they get one shot. And so we're super proud of these students. Andy is, is missing one thing. Andy has the opportunity to do something that no one has ever done, which is that Andy went last year and he made a superior rating at the state level. And so even as a junior, he got the top recognition that you can get for state solo U.I.L. competition. You have that medal. Okay. So he did it last year. So he has the opportunity to be the first person for Port Arthur to do it twice. So we're very proud of all of our students and we thank you for your time tonight.
I think at this time, first of all, I want to say congratulations. And I'm going to get to the trustees in a minute. First, I'd say congratulations on going to state. When we talk about state, I get excited because I wasn't in the band. I didn't have the luxury of being in the band. But I was in choir. And I went to state all four years of my, from ninth grade to high, to my 12th grade year. And I went to state in solo and ensemble with a solo, quartet, and a... And I went to state in solo, uh, solo and ensemble with, uh, a solo quartet and a singing ensemble. So I understand what you are going through it and I, I look across the room and I see another person, she'll be very surprised if I say this, but another person who I followed growing up as a young boy, who went to state and she went to Dillard University. I already know, she already know what I'm talking about. And it's Miss Alana, uh, Miss Alana in the back there. But she was a choir member and she was an excellent vocalist and been to state several times in high school. And she went on to, uh, college and went to, uh, Dillard University. Hey, Miss, I'm sorry, I'm sorry for putting you out there like that. But, uh, understanding going to state, I, I understand it is, is a very exciting thing. And you said that, you know, this is your last time, uh, going to state. Make it, let's not make it your last time. Let's do like Mr. Frazier did, went over to Texas Southern and came back and became a brand director. So come back and take his position. How about that? How about that? So we're looking forward for you all to have a great time in, at, at state. Please go and experience it. I experienced it. I understand what it's about. I understand the, uh, greatness, just seeing the campus there in Austin. And, uh, I wish you all good luck. Dr. Brown.
Thank you very much. Uh, I too want to say congratulations to you. I also want to acknowledge our superintendent, Dr. Porter, uh, for your willingness to spend so much time and energy out in the field, so it's be, beyond being at your desk, including last week, the, you know, in a week where we had STAR testing, three tornadoes and all this going on, uh, you still took the time to make it to the 100 Black Men of Way to Beaumont Scholarship Banquet Program, Annual Scholarship Banquet Program. You and Dr. Small, um, Ms. Batiste, Ms. Avery and other, uh, employees who were there. We appreciate that. And amongst the students who will recognize that Ms. Loft just, uh, showed on the screen and Nguyen was one of our scholarship recipients. So I'm not surprised to see you here today and I'm not surprised to see you going back to state. So congratulations, proud of you.
Yeah, Ms. Ambrose and Ms. Johnson.
I'd just like to offer my congratulations to you all. I take nothing away from any of you. Best luck to you, but specifically Ms. Mila. It is so good to see her. I saw her when she was a little bitty baby just born. So congratulations to you all and good luck at state.
Ms. Johnson.
Uh, I'd also like to congratulate you all and I just wanted to, um, highlight, what was your name again? Uh, Mrs. Sauter's comment because it says a lot about our band director from what she said, because she came in, you know, like she said, she didn't really know too much about it. She wasn't the most musically inclined, but you guys have gotten her to a point where she's now going to state like that fast. And so this says a lot about you. It says a lot about her peers who she's playing with because a lot of times sponsors or, or directors don't always take the time that they should, but that speaks volumes as to what you do, that in this little amount of time, she's gained that confidence and become to a state level. I mean, so you are like, you are like it, you know? We are happy to have you here because you've molded her, uh, even with the gentleman that's a senior, how well he's spoken about it. It just basically shows that you're doing what you're supposed, you're supposed to do, along with everybody who's helping you out and the peers, they're excited about it and you're pushing them and getting them where they should be. So I definitely want to make sure that we give you kudos on that. And also, uh, to you to not give up because you see what you can do now with the potential of just a little hard work. A lot of times students don't want to take the time to put their hard work in. A lot of times they want things given to them, but you're a prime example of what can happen when you really take the time and work hard and you are like at the top level now. I mean, so like you say, it's only up from here, uh, with the band. So that's very, very good to hear, being that I've never even been able to play an instrument. And I did go to solo and ensemble in choir with Mr. Barti, my classmate, but I definitely did not get a superior, but I tried my best. And you know, um, we got superior in the ensemble together. So, you know, I could sing with the choir, but not alone. However, you know, I wasn't in a band, but it's good to know that it's still making an impact that it has done and that you guys are moving forward. Sky's the limit, so just keep being great.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Porter.
To our parents, who we could not do this work without. To our sponsors, our teachers, our band teachers, our directors, thank you. Because no one, no one understands the work that goes beyond the date. It, you just don't stop at four or five. You go beyond. You're practicing in the, in the mornings, in the afternoons, late in the afternoons. The work that you do, no one will ever understand that. The late, people in our community don't understand the extra time that you put into this. And once again, to our parents, for you to create and love the children that we have seen here tonight, you are to be commended. Because in 2024, raising children is not easy. And for you to produce this in 2024, you're doing something right. And lastly, to the wonderful, awesome children, students that we have in the Port Arthur Independent School District, we have said over and over that our children can go anywhere and can compete against anyone and be winners. And you all are proving that right now, when you can go and compete and come back on top, on top. And in the words of the student that said, winning is not enough? Keep that, keep that. Because I'm telling you, the students in Port Arthur Independent School District, we will put you up against any student in Texas and you will come out on top. Congratulations to all of you. And thank you for coming. We understand that you have homework, you got other things to do. And parents, thank you for, uh, sitting so long with us. So thank you. And grandparents, I said grandparents too. She did say, you, you got your, um, your, your smarts from her now. That's right. She's at the front row. I'm the, I'm the parent. But you know, our, our grandparents are the parents. Don't tell me our kid's not good. Don't tell it to me. Because I will fight you. No, we're done. That's, it, it concludes our staff report.
Thank you, Dr. Porter, with your staff reports. Now minutes, considering if appropriate, approve the minutes of the March 28th, 2024 regular board, board meeting and the minutes of the April 2nd, 2024 special board meeting. Can I get a motion? Have a motion on the floor by trustee Ambrose in a second? Second by secretary Johnson, all in favor, say aye? All opposed? Let the motion carries. Consider agenda. The following items, which are of a routine and recurring nature, has been designated considered agenda items by the board president per policy B E local. All of the items that are considered agenda will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by trustee, in which the event, the items or items will be withdrawn immediately for individual consideration in its normal sequence after the item's not requesting separate discussion has been acted upon. Trustees, I'm going to give you a minute to go through your consent agenda. This time, I'd like to get a motion to approve considered agenda items one through 12. Can I get a motion?
So move for approval items of the considered agenda items, numbers one through 12.
Have a motion on the floor by trustee Narcisse in a second? Second by Dr. Brown, all in favor, say aye? Aye? All opposed? Motion carries. Personnel, Dr. Porter.
Board members, I've given you the list of teachers for your consideration.
Considering if appropriate, approve employment of teachers. Can I get a, uh, motion?
So move for approval.
Have a motion on the floor by trustee Narcisse. Can I get a second? Second by secretary Johnson, all in favor, say aye? Aye? All opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Porter.
Board members, I am asking for your approval for employment of assistant principal at Thomas Jefferson Middle School, Mrs. Nicole Dunn.
Can I get a motion to approve assistant principal of Thomas Jefferson Middle School, Mrs. Nicole Dunn?
So move for approval.
Have approval by, uh, trustee Narcisse in a second? Second by trustee, uh, trustee, Dr. Brown, all in favor, say aye? Aye? All opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Porter.
I am asking for your approval for the employment of assistant principal at Memorial High School, Mrs. Bridget Yates.
Can I get a motion to approve the assistant principal of Memorial High School? Have approval on the board by, a motion on the floor by trustee Narcisse. Can I get a second? Second by trustee Ambrose, all in favor, say aye? Aye? All opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Porter.
I am asking for your approval for employment of principal of the Port Arthur Alternative School, Mr. Curtis D. Fontenot.
Have a motion on the floor by trustee Ambrose to approve Mr. Fontenot as principal of the Port Arthur, uh, Alternative Campus. Can I get a second? Second by trustee Narcisse, all in favor, say aye? Aye? All opposed? Motion carries. Information, Dr. Porter.
And I would like to, uh, before I give the information, I want you to see and, and just acknowledge, within one month, we've come up, last month, I think the enrollment, enrollment was like, uh, 8,150. This month, enrollment has increased to 8,188. So that is about 30, 38 new students that have come into our district. So we are steadily getting students. Our, uh, enrollment is coming up, but obviously our, um, our demographics is changing. Demographics is really changing, so. But right now, we're 53% Hispanic, 39% African American and then other. So the demographics are changing. But the good thing about it, we have students that are coming into our district late, but we're getting them ready for the next school year. Uh, the average daily enrollment, 8,188. Average daily attendance, 92.13%. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Dr. Porter, for that information. I'll declare in German that this meeting at 7:14.
So move.
Have a motion on the floor by trustee Narcisse in a second? Second by secretary Johnson, all in favor, say aye? Motion passes. Thank you, you are dismissed.